If the room could please come to order. The time is now 6:00 on Tuesday, May 6, 2025. This is the day and time scheduled for the regular session of the Westland Planning Commission for the month of May. If I can please have everybody join us, rise and join us in the recitation of the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Duranti?
Present.
Foltz?
Present.
Hobbs?
Present.
Hopkins?
Present.
Richards?
Present.
Rounds?
Present.
Stachow?
Present.
Swokis?
Present.
Rappaport? Present. Thank you very much, Administration. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes for April 8, 2025.
So moved.
Support.
Recognizing David Swokis with that motion, support by Ruby Richards. Roll call, please.
Roll call to approve the April 8 meeting minutes. Duranti?
Yes.
Foltz, I believe you're going to abstain.
Abstain.
Hobbs?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Rounds?
Yes.
Stachow?
Yes.
Swokis?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Thank you very much. This is the point in our agenda where we offer an opportunity to the citizens to comment on anything that is currently not on our agenda. Please, this is not an opportunity to jump into our business agenda and speak on items that we will be covering during our action agenda. However, if there's something that we need to be made aware of that's not currently on our agenda to be handled today, this is your opportunity to rise to the podium. There are agendas available, I believe, at the podium. Anybody on my right wish to make a citizen's comment? Seeing none. Anybody on my left wish to make a citizen's comment? There's lights and sirens outside.
And what are we commenting on? Are we commenting on the agenda?
No, ma'am. This is specifically for things that are not on the agenda to be handled at a later time.
Number three is withdrawn here on the agenda, so.
Understood. Thank you very much. Moving on to our action items for today. We're going to begin. A motion is in order, it's come to my attention, that case number 1933C has been withdrawn by the petitioner. A motion is in order to remove item number three from the agenda. May I have that motion?
I'll make that motion, sir.
Recognizing David Swokis for that motion, and the second is from Ruby Richards. All those in favor, please indicate so. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please indicate so nay. Thank you very much. The item number three has been removed from our agenda. I have some personal thoughts on this matter, and I will be making those comments during my time at the end of the meeting.
For the audience, Chair, can I read number three so everyone knows what it is? Or if you want to do that, that's.
Absolutely. Item number three, and Administration, if I miss anything that's very important, please do follow me up. Case number 1933C was a special land use for a parcel that was zoned industrial uses to extend an existing parking facility for semi trucks. This was going to be a very contentious item for a number of reasons, which I personally will go into when I have more freedom to speak generally. But seeing the amount of concern from the citizens nearby, the petitioner has chosen to remove the item.
Yep. This was the truck and trailer storage on Florence Street.
Yeah, you can clap.
Can you put the agenda up on the screen? Can you put the agenda up there? There's no paper.
We can print some more out if you just give us a couple of minutes, okay?
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
The item's been withdrawn, and it will not be considered unless it's resubmitted. Come on, clap. I just explained.
Just one last, Chair, can I have floor?
I'm afraid that's not in order. Administration, you do have the floor. Please keep it brief.
This is the last time we're going to discuss this topic. The Florence Truck and Trailer Yard is no longer on the agenda. We will not be discussing it tonight. You are welcome to stay or leave, whatever you choose to do, but we do need the room quiet to discuss other business. Please and thank you.
Okay, a future date? Should we discuss this?
Good question. If this does come back up, you will get notified like you did previously. Okay? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Moving on to item number one on our agenda, which is, folks, if you intend to leave, please do so quietly. Moving on to item one on our agenda, consideration of the request of the City of Westland to review and recommend approval of the proposed capital improvements planned commencing fiscal year 2025, 2026. Daniel Bach, would you like to present this, sir? Hi, Dan. Very good to see you again.
Good evening. So in your packet is the capital improvement plan. It starts on July 1, 2025, and goes through.
Pardon me. Can I have somebody close the chamber doors? Thank you, Dan. Please, continue.
So in your packet is the capital improvement plan from July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2031. The plan is part of the overall budget process for the city, where as part of the Michigan Enabling or Planning Enabling Act, this plan goes before the Planning Commission for approval prior to approval by the City Council in the annual budget. This plan includes various capital needs throughout the city that are accounted for within the Capital Improvement Fund, also the major and local road projects that include concrete or asphalt repairs or joint crack sealing that are accounted for within the major and local road funds, and also includes water and sewer main repairs throughout the city and equipment needs based on the recommendations from the city's Department of Public Services Director and the city engineers, and those are accounted for within the Water and Sewer Fund. There's also a map that's included that shows all the various projects throughout the city and where they are located, and I can hopefully answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much. The Board has received a packet of your proposal, I believe. Is that correct? And this is a public hearing, so I'm going to ask you to find a close seat right there. We'll bring you right back up. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on the budgetary concerns? Obviously, not on my right. On my left, any citizens wish to speak on the budget? Seeing none. Mr. Bach, if you could please return to the pro forma, and I will now open it up to the members of the Commission, recognizing David Swokis.
Through the chair to the Budget Director, on page five, under continuing leasing of four cars annually, what positions do those cars get leased for? Is that like mayor, police chief, fire chief, and one other person? Or which entities do those cover?
Through the chair, those are related to police vehicles only.
Okay, so that's the annual thing that the Council just approved, what was it, about a month ago? There was some kind of a bid, or I think, I believe, from one of the Ford dealers or one of them that came up?
This is through the Enterprise Leasing Company. So Enterprise will, and I forget when it was done, it was recently, so they'll do another four police vehicles that are leased through that program.
Okay. Thanks. That's all I have.
Anybody on my right? Recognizing Brian Hopkins.
I see on that same page, improved motorcycle unit. Does that mean we're getting a couple cycles on the force?
Through the chair, that is correct. In 2025, 26, it's proposed to have two motorcycle vehicles replacing two older ones, and then in 26, 27, there'll be an additional two.
Excellent news.
Thank you very much. Anybody additionally on my left? Seeing none. Anybody additionally on my right? Seeing none. A motion is in order to recommend the plan as proposed by the Budget Director to the City Council for approval.
So moved.
Recognizing Daryl Rounds for the motion, and David Swokis for the second. For all those in favor, please indicate so. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please indicate so nay. The ayes have it. The chair is not in question. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Onto item number two, case number 2127C, proposed rezoning from I-1 General Industrial District to Office Business District at 37415 Cherry Hill. Is the petitioner in the audience? Please, Administration, if you could please tell us a little bit about the proposal.
Of course. Thank you, Chairman. The property here is about 25,000 square feet in size. It currently contains a vacant building. It is Zoned I-2, General Industrial District. The petitioner is requesting to rezone the property to OB, that's our Office Business District, to allow for various site improvements, including the construction of an addition and the establishment of what was proposed as a medical office. If this is approved tonight, the rezoning case will go to the City Council for final approval, and then the petitioner will have to file a site plan application to build out the addition that will come before you. There's a concept plan in your packet that's also here on the screen, and it is just that. It's just a concept plan. There's also a concept floor plan, none of which was reviewed or approved by any of the departments, since this is just a rezoning case at this time, and a more comprehensive site plan will follow at a later date. So adjacent land uses and zoning, property to the north is Zoned CB3, General Commercial Business, and is developed by CVS. Property to the south is Zoned I-2, General Industrial, and is developed by West Gate Auto Parts. To the east, we have a gas station. It's Zoned CB3, General Commercial. And to the west, I-2, General Industrial, it's the site of the Haverstick Automobile Storage, which no longer exists there. The site is currently vacant. The subject property, as mentioned, is developed by a small commercial building that was originally occupied by Lawson's Convenience Store, was the original occupant when the building was built. Although the site has been Zoned I-2, General Industrial, for over three decades and possibly even since the parcel was divided and developed, it is inadequate for industrial uses and was never occupied for industrial use. And the history of the site has always been for commercial uses. The 2018 future land use map indicates industrial use as well, but this is one of the subject properties that we will be changing the future land use designation for in the new master plan update. That's currently underway. That's all I have on this site. The Administration and Planning Department are recommending approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. If I can please have the petitioner rise to the podium, be recognized. Please state your name.
Walid Omar.
Hi, Mr. Omar. Did you have anything that you'd like to add to the presentation by the Administration?
No, no. No, nothing to add.
All right, then. This is a public hearing, so I am going to ask you to take a seat right nearby, and just like we did before, we're going to ask if there's anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on this matter. Seeing none on my right. Is there anybody on my left in attendance that would like to speak on this proposal? Hearing none. Mr. Omar, if I could please have you return to the podium, and we will open it up to the Commission for questions and commentary. Anybody on my left? Seeing none. If there's anybody on my right that wishes, recognizing Brian Hopkins.
Good evening, Mr. Omar.
Good evening.
I'm very excited that you're going to do this. I think this is a great rezoning for this area. I've lived in the area all my life, and I've seen businesses come and go there. I'm very excited about the parking lot being fixed. Because as the owner, I'm sure you know that it is a huge pothole.
Yes.
I'm very excited for you, and you have my support.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Hopkins. Is there anybody on my left additionally? Anybody on my right additionally? No. Before I open it up for a motion, I had a quick question to the Administration. What is the difference between an I-1 usage and the OB usage in our code? I would think that office businesses would fit into I-1.
Office businesses do fit into the I-1 Industrial District so long as they're tied to an industrial operation. This is a medical office, which is actually not permitted in the I-1 or I-2 district.
Thank you for the clarification. Very, very interesting. The motion is to Deanna Stachow to make? Is that correct?
Yes.
And please remember to close the public hearing.
Okay. I'd like to close the public hearing and send case number 2127C, proposed rezoning from I-2, General Industrial, to OB, Office Business District, and that's located at 37415 Cherry Hill, south side of Cherry Hill, west of Newburgh Road. And the recommendation is, the Administration, the Planning Department recommends that this petition forward to the City Council with a recommendation for approval contingent upon the departmental requirements and recommendations, sir.
Chair recognizes the motion by Deanna Stachow, assumes that the motion is made to waive the normal rules, and recognizes support by Ruby Richards. Roll call, please.
Roll call vote to recommend approval of case number 2127C. Duranti?
Yes.
Foltz?
Yes.
Hobbs?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Rounds?
Yes.
Stachow?
Yes.
Swokis?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Yes.
Motion's approved.
Congratulations, sir. Please see the Administration for next steps for your proposal.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number four on our agenda, case number 2275, proposed site plan approval for a retail plaza at 35937 Ford Road. Petitioner Hassan Barakat.
Yep.
Administration?
Thanks. This project has been in the works for maybe over a year. The property is 30,000 square feet here. It's outlined in yellow on your screen. It's currently undeveloped, Zone CB1, low intensity commercial business. It's also located in the Ford Road Overlay District. The petitioner is requesting site plan approval to develop a, just a little under 10,000 square foot retail plaza, which is proposed to accommodate a variety of commercial uses. The petitioner also owns the adjacent Avita Carpet and Flooring Business on the same side of Ford Road to the west, there at the other corner. And the new building will include a small storage area for materials sold by that business. There has been, just for the record and for your information, some preliminary discussions of a potential hookah lounge being located in one of the larger spaces. If that does come to fruition, it will have to come before the Planning Commission and City Council for special land use approval. Adjacent land use and zoning, property to the north is Zoned CB3, General Commercial Business. It's currently a vacant commercial building in blighted condition. Property to the south is R2, single-family residential and undeveloped. There's a little portion on the bottom right-hand corner that is adjacent to the other residential property on Walton Street, and there's a question by a Commissioner if that's a vacant house. It's actually a garage. Property to the east is Zoned CB1 and is developed by Retail Plaza, and property to the west is CB1 as well, developed by the carpet and flooring business I referred to earlier. The 2018 future land use map designation for the site is city center. Getting into some of the design elements of the site plan, site access is provided by a single full-service driveway located at the northeast corner of the property along Ford Road, the existing curb cut at the northwest corner on Ford Road, as well as the existing curb cut at Berry Street. Both of those will be removed, curb installed, and grass planted. The building is proposed to be located within 10 feet of the front property lines along both Berry and Ford Road, which is a requirement of the Ford Road Overlay District to provide sort of that more walkable downtown feel that you see in downtowns. There is an outdoor seating area proposed within the front yard setback I just mentioned along both Berry Street and Ford Road. The Ford Road Overlay District requires 44 off-street parking spaces. The Ford Road Overlay District requires less parking than the traditional zoning, which would be required only under the CB1 district. Forty-four off-street parking spaces required, 46 being provided. The site includes screening and landscaping along both Ford Road and Berry Street, along with a 30-inch tall decorative wall with fencing, similar to the one seen on the intersection of Ford Road and Wayne. There is a six-foot tall masonry wall, which is required, and a landscaping buffer also provided, screening the adjacent residential uses that I mentioned earlier. There is a dumpster enclosure as required, site lighting as required, and also stormwater management as required. The bulk requirements, including setbacks, height, and lot coverage, and all of those good things, we review. The four site plan are all in compliance, and therefore, the Planning Department and Administration are recommending approval. I don't have a colored rendering, but the building materials proposed are high-quality materials. Happy to answer any questions, and I think the petitioner is also in the audience.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Petitioner, if you are in the audience, please rise to the podium. Good evening.
Go ahead, this way.
Did you have anything to add to the presentation by the Administration?
No, I don't.
All right. This is a special land use and a public hearing, so we're going to open it up to the audience again, see if anybody has anything that they'd like to contribute, and we'll call you right back up to the podium. Is there anybody in the audience on my left that would like to speak on this matter? Seeing none. Let's have you come back up, and we'll open it up to the Administration. Sorry. Is there anybody up on the DS, on my right, that would like to speak? Recognizing Deanna Stachow.
Okay. Hi, good evening. Yeah, I just wanted to set again for the record that the existing curb at the northwest corner on Ford Road, as well as the existing curb at the Berry Street, will be removed. And I think that it's an excellent idea, that'll cut any type of traffic, excessive traffic, and thank you for your planning in that respect.
Thank you.
Anybody on my left? Seeing none. Recognizing Brian Hopkins.
Commissioner Rappaport, I believe you said it was special land use? Is it special land use or just a site plan?
We have it marked on our agenda as a public hearing, so I assume that means it's special land use.
Thank you for your business that you're already doing here, and you have my support on this. It looks great. I would think this would make an excellent addition on the Ford Road corridor. You've got my vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody additionally on my left? Recognizing David Swokis.
Through the chair to the petitioner. We received a communication from a resident, and I've talked to a few residents over there, and they're concerned about cars, they're concerned about changing the essential character of the neighborhood, being with, you know, this is a special land use approval, we do have a little leeway, and, you know, I'm all for, you know, I like the fact what you're bringing to the area. It's, on its face, it's nice. But for me, I'm just concerned that, you know, one of the residents is here, that there are a lot of derelict cars on every square foot of the lot, that there are, you know, that they just have a lot, and they don't like how it's going to change the neighborhood there. And I'm just concerned, what are you going to do to, kind of like, have you talked with the residents, or have the residents come to you with any issues, or are you aware that the residents are in that area there in Walton are not happy that this is coming here?
No.
Because like I said, we have a letter that was dated March 15 here, and basically calls to, you know, the cars everywhere, the dirt lot, you know, all of the different things there, and they feel like it's just going to change their neighborhood with all the traffic, especially if you have potentially a hookah bar. And I know that that's not what we're looking at here, but I'm looking at it as a special land use approval, and I always like to err on the side of what is comfortable for the residents, and at this point, I'm just not convinced that this is not something right now that I want to support, because residents have expressed that, you know, doubt and concern.
Mr. Chair, can I jump in, please?
I was about to ask for you to do so.
There is an asterisk.
From the chair to the Administration, there does not seem to be a confirmable presence of a special land use here. Can you please explain to us why item number four, case number 2275, has been marked as a public hearing?
I cannot. I think that made it in there by mistake. There is nothing on any paperwork that says special land use. The asterisk was a mistake. This is a site plan.
So do I understand correctly that case number 2275 is not a special land use?
That is correct, sir, yes.
So the proposed land use for this is a land use as of right without special land use? Is that correct?
At this time, yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Sorry, everybody, for the public hearing that we didn't need to do. But thank you very much, Mr. Swokis. Your concerns are still very valid, and I did take a moment to read the piece of paper by the citizen. The communication is offered in good faith, and if I'm reading it very generally, the citizens just concern that there may be environmental concerns, and of course, as good neighbors, we'd certainly ask that you'd be cognizant of our green mission here in Westland. we'd certainly ask that you'd be cognizant of our green mission here in Westland. So, that being said, if I can please continue while we've gone to the left. Is anybody on my right wish to speak on this matter? Recognizing Daryl Rounds. Thank you very much.
You have a question. In our packet, we received an application for site plan or special land use approval, and it mentions carpet and tile sale, which is included, but I don't see anything with respect to the carryout, fast food, and hookah lounge. Can somebody give us some insight on those other two items?
From the chair, from the Commission, to the Chair, to the Administration, if you could please respond to that?
Sure.
Because there seems to be a lot of confusion about what's going on with this particular matter.
We use an application that is both for site plan and special land use. Sometimes you get a site plan and special land use application, sometimes you get a special land use application, sometimes in this case, you get only a site plan application. We use a combined application. We are later this month or next month splitting those applications up, because the fees changed. I think you're aware of all that stuff. So that will be different in the future. There is a site plan, a comprehensive site plan, in your packet that includes a floor plan with proposed uses, none of which are confirmed. We are looking at the site plan today as a retail plaza generally, and not approving any specific uses. So if there are uses in the future that fall under special land use designation, including a hookah lounge, that will have to come before you and the City Council for approval. I did speak directly to the resident that wrote the letter, and they were concerned mostly about an auto-related business going into that plaza, and that is not the case, and we would, I would not, I would hope not to send that to you. If the petitioner was adamant about an auto use going to you, that would make its way to you, and you can approve or deny it at that point. That's a summary of everything that I think needs to be said to clear things up.
Thank you, sir.
No problem.
Thank you, Mr. Rounds. Returning to my left, anybody wish to speak on my left? Seeing none. Anybody additionally on my right? Seeing none. Oh, nope. So I did want to briefly say something, and the only reason that I mention this is because I was driving around with my mother, who's a lifetime, longtime resident of, probably not as, quite as long as Commissioner Hopkins. But she was noticing that we, a similar proposal that we approved has resulted in a corner that previously was quite dilapidated and a little depressed, and now looks significantly better. So I am looking very, very, hopefully, towards what you will hopefully do if you are granted approval. So, that being said, motion is in order, recognizing Ruby Richards for that motion.
I move to send case number 2275, proposed site plan approval for retail plaza at 35937 Ford Road, northeast corner of Carlson and Ford Road, to City Council with a recommendation for approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations.
Second.
That's Ruby Richards for the motion. Second came from Daryl Rounds, is that correct?
Yes.
I think so.
Second is from Daryl Rounds. Roll call, please.
Okay, this is roll call. Vote to approve case number 2275. Deranti?
Yes.
Folks?
Yes.
Hobbs?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Rounds?
Yes.
Stachow?
Yes.
Swokis?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion's approved.
Thank you very much. You have a recommendation. You'll go next to the City Council. Please see the Administration for the next steps. Congratulations and good luck to you.
Thank you.
Moving on to case number 2230A, proposed site plan approval for an addition for a new parish social hall at 821 North Newburgh Road. Administration, please.
Yes, thank you. Okay. Property here is about an acre in size. It's zoned R2, single-family residential. It is currently developed by a 1,600-square-foot church. The applicant is requesting site plan approval to construct a 3,400-square-foot addition. This addition will serve as a social hall for parish activities, including Sunday school, classes, educational programs, dinners, coffee hours, and other cultural events, from information I received from the church. Additional site improvements are also proposed in addition to the addition, including the removal of the existing shed near the Newburgh frontage, new landscaping throughout the site in compliance with ordinance requirements, the construction of a dumpster enclosure, paving of the access drives and parking areas, which are currently unpaved, and the construction of a 324-square-foot shed. The future land use designation for the site is semi-public, which is consistent with the use of the property for a church or religious institution. Design elements related to the site plan and the addition, site access will be maintained via the existing full-service driveway at the north side of the site. Kind of see it there on your screen in the northeast corner. The site requires 51 parking spaces, but the proposal contains only 22 off-street parking spaces. This is a significant deficiency, and a parking variance is required. The proposed addition will be constructed primarily using brick that matches the existing building with stone, I think a couple feet raised up from the bottom. Kind of see it on your left-hand side in the top there. That's the addition. All of the other bulk requirements, the setbacks, the height and lot coverage are in compliance with the R2 zoning designation specifically for the use of a church. Those are different from set bulk requirements for a home. The Administration and Planning Department are recommending approval of this for the Planning Commission, subject to the parking variance being obtained by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Some additional information, I did contact the applicant and personally expressed concern for the parking deficiency, and I think they understood as well. And there was a discussion that was had to maybe bring a site plan to you tonight that maybe isn't compliant. I'm not sure if that was done or relate to these individuals that are in attendance. Just wanted to state that additional information on the record. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is the petitioner in attendance? If I could please have you rise to the podium, be recognized. Hi there, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Did you have anything that you'd like to add to the presentation? I'm sorry, are you just going to remain silent? That's fine. Nobody has to answer me. I don't deserve that. I didn't get that. Anyways, this is a public hearing, so we're going to have you take a quick seat, and we did receive a letter, and hopefully, that person is in attendance. So if I could please have you have a seat. Is there anybody on my left that would like to speak on this matter? Okay. So we did receive a citizen letter, and when we don't have that citizen available, I like to kind of try to summarize what their concerns were. They were expressing concerns over the trees being cut down. Now, we do have some issue with our tree ordinance currently, that we certainly have a preference that we try to maintain a balance of our arboreal glorious awesomeness in Westland, and of course, we would be asking you to exceed to whatever request that the Administration makes that you find to be reasonable. But as far as the status of our statute, unfortunately, we do not have a statute for you to comply with. So, and that's now on the YouTube videos forever and always. So if I could please have you return to the podium, we're going to open this up to the Commission. Is there anybody that wishes to speak on this? On my right, recognizing Sam Derati.
Why can't you use some of this other land for parking that's there? You're not using it all for the addition.
No.
Well, why can't you use some of that land for parking? Why can't you pave that and use that for parking?
You mean the land that is behind the parking area that is proposed, or the land that we currently have? I'm not clear.
Well, it's, I don't know what shape it is, but you've got trees along the one side, you've got the shed that you're going to remove, you've got all kind of land there that you're not going to be using.
Well, we are using that for parking in the plants.
But there's not enough parking. You've got to clear some of that, the trees out, and put more parking in, is what I'm saying.
So we're trying to avoid not to cut trees.
Pardon me?
Trying to avoid not to cut trees for parking lots.
Well, I can't approve it with that many parking places for a church. So my vote will be no unless there's more parking.
Thank you very much, Sam. Anybody on my left wish to speak on this matter? Okay, David.
Through the chair to the petitioner. I like what you're trying to do here, and while I have the concern about the number of parking spaces, about how many parishioners do you have in attendance usually on a given Sunday? Like, say like we just had Pasca, I'm Greek Orthodox, and I met St. Con's over there, and, you know, we pack them out, and we usually have about 4,000. How many do you seat in your church, and what percentage does it usually fill the capacity in its busiest season?
Okay, let me respond to that a little bit. First of all, let me introduce myself. I'm Father Simeon Cato. I'm the parish priest of this church. I've been the parish priest since May of 2022. It's a very small community. On a typical Sunday service, we have maybe 20 to 25 people total, counting myself, on a typical Sunday. Of course, on Easter, it's, you get more. Our midnight service, we probably had, I don't know, I'd say about 75 to 100 people, something like that. But our typical community is probably around 25, you know, on a regular Sunday, or sometimes less.
So, like, when you had the Easter services, like, how did you deal with the, did you have enough parking, or do people have to park like on the street, or like what's the, or do they park on the grass, or?
Well, we have grass surrounding the building now. It's not paved currently, so they park on the grass surrounding the church area.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I mean, I'm.
To my knowledge, I'm sorry, excuse me.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Being the parish priest, I didn't really go outside. Well, we did go outside the church to circle the church.
Right.
And there were no cars that were parked on the street that I saw, although that wasn't my predominant concern as I was circling the church.
Because I know I've talked to parishioners in the area, and then, of course, I talked to my parish priest, Father Theodore Petruccio. He's Romanian. And I know he has said he has been there, and that, talking to residents, residents didn't seem that they had any issues. I mean, you know, you're going to, I think, I'm going to go ahead and say, I'm going to support this and allow you the opportunity to go to ZBA to get the variance. If they don't grant you the variance for the parking spots, are you then willing to say, hey, I'm going to probably have to cut some trees and add some parking to that then? Or, because, you know, it's not a guarantee. I mean, it's, you know, there's a burden of proof that you have to make to the Zoning Board of Appeals to do that. But, I mean, I want to at least give you that opportunity to do that, and I'm all for it, especially, you know, you're a smaller community, and you can only grow if you allow more things to happen. I know that from us, because when we relocated our church from Detroit out here to where the Hellenic Center is, we used our hall for a number of years, and we didn't have the amount of parking that we have now that we built the church, and that's allowed the church to grow from, I think we had at that time when we came here in the 80s, about 2,000 members, and we're sitting at about 11,000 members right now at St. Constantine and Helen. And it's, but I'll be in support of this to give you the opportunity to go to ZBA and get your opportunity to ask for a variance.
In response to your question, I don't have any problem considering more parking spots, as long as the community is in favor it as well. I mean, we don't want to cause any, obviously, any bad relations with our neighbors, which we really haven't. They, I think even in the letter, that she said, she commented that it's a nice community.
Yeah, I've heard that.
But they're concerned about the trees, and I think further part of the area in the back of the church, I'm not sure where you see, all the wooded area, I thought some of that was protected anyways, so that's why we couldn't build on it, because it was like a watershed, but I'm not exactly sure.
Right. Yeah, I appreciate that you're at least thinking of that for the residents, because I know as of late, we've had a lot of residents say that, but I believe that this is a good opportunity to allow a community to expand, and, you know, being that you're a smaller community, yeah, I believe you at least should be given the opportunity to plead your case before the Zoning Board of Appeals and seek that. And if not, then, you know, then you'll probably have, you'll have to come back probably, I would imagine, with a revised site plan for more parking spots. But I'll be in support of it.
Thank you, David. Returning to the right, recognizing Deanna Stachow.
Yes.
I'm sorry. If I could please have the citizens in the gallery not comment while the petitioners are being questioned. I understand, but there was an opportunity for you to speak. Please be respectful. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Through the chair to Administration. Now, is there any type of code as far as the trees are concerned, and what the petitioners are referencing to with maybe a problem with cutting trees down? Are you aware of any of this area or the code?
Trees can be cut down, subject to an approved site plan. We did modify our zoning ordinance to include an updated tree ordinance, which has been in effect for at least a few months. Whether there's wetlands back there, whether they're regulated or not regulated, I'm not aware of that, no.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, because that would make a big difference in relationship to, number one, having this pass, because that is quite a big difference between the 51 that's required and only accommodating 22. And hopefully, it will grow. So I would like to just leave my comment at that in relationship to possibly being able to extend that if it is possible to do so, and make additional parking for your parishioners. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Returning to the left, anybody on my left wish to speak? Seeing none. Anybody on my right wish to speak? Recognizing Brian Hopkins.
Greetings, thank you. I live in the area, and I participate. When you guys offer food, it's excellent. You are excellent neighbors, and I have never, ever once seen an overflow of any parking in any situation on the main roads or violating anything at all. As far as parking's concerned, you're pleasant neighbors. I love having you around. I'm excited just to see that your gravel parking lot will become a real parking lot. I hope that ZBA approves your request, and I too, like David, will support this and let you get a chance in front of the ZBA. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Returning to the left, anybody wish to speak? Returning to the Returning to the right, anybody wish to speak? Seeing none. Before a motion is in order, much like Brian, I also live in the area. I haven't seen any overflow from any of your events, even when you do run events. You've always been a good use in that area. I would recommend, in the event that there is some continuing concern over your potential overflow, there are a number of businesses in the nearby area that do not make full use of their parking. Perhaps that would propose a solution. But other than that, I really don't intend to express an opinion on this matter, except that I do actually do recognize that you are very, very good occupiers of that space. And I thank you very much for bringing your, for bringing your presence.
Thank you.
A motion is in order.
I'll make the motion.
Recognizing Darrell Rounds.
I'd like to close the public hearing and waive the normal rules and recommend that case number 2230A, proposed site plan approval for an addition for a new parish social hall located at 821 North Newburgh Road, west side of Newburgh, north of Florence Street, St. Simon Romanian Orthodox Church, Regina Jude, be forwarded to City Council with the recommendation for approval, subject to the petitioner obtaining the required parking variance from the zoning Board of Appeals and contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations.
Support.
Darrell Rounds for the motion. Support by Brian Hopkins. Roll call, please.
Roll call votes who recommend approval of case number 2230A, subject to the parking variance being granted by the zoning Board of Appeals. Durante?
Support.
Foles?
Support.
Hobbs?
Support.
Hopkins?
Support.
Richards?
Support.
Rounds?
Support.
Stachow?
Support.
Swolkes?
Support.
Repport?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck to you at the ZBA level, and please see the administration for next steps. Thank you very much. Last item on our agenda is the rescheduling of the Tuesday, June 3, 2020. Oh, before I do, there was a couple that came in while this proposal was up. Did you want to rise to the podium and have a question answered?
We're just the architects that represent the project, so we apologize for being, like, late, but we just thought that we could answer any questions that you guys may propose.
Your tardiness is totally forgiven.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
It's my authority. I have that authority. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Moving on to item number six, rescheduling the Tuesday, June 3, 2025 Planning Commission meeting to Wednesday, June 4, 2025 at 6:00 PM. Administration, what is the reason for the rescheduling, please?
My son's last soccer game, and he's three, so.
Oh, so moved.
Not really a game. It's not really a game.
So moved.
Ridiculous. So a motion is in order to approve. Recognizing Sam Durante for that motion. Second by Ruby Richards. All those in favor, please indicate so. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please indicate so, nay. The ayes have it, the chair is not in question. Congratulations. Enjoy your son. Commissioners' comments. I'll start at the end with Sam Durante.
Well, I'm sure glad we could have that one taste tonight. But I appreciate all the people that showed up and showed up.
Darrell Rounds?
I'm just thankful to be able to serve in this capacity, so, and thankful to serve with all of you, so blessings to you. Thank you.
We're blessed with you two as well. Deanna? Deanna Stashow?
Happy birthday to you, little one there.
Oh, thank you.
And I think the meeting went very well also, and I'm like yourselves, Sam, glad that it was withdrawn, the one proposal, or with the one case. Also, too, I think that, you know, one thing I did want to ask through the chair to administration, they're going to be going first to the ZBA before they end up going to council, correct?
Okay. Kind of glad you asked that question. This might open up a can of worms, though. This was a site plan approval. When we approved the new zoning ordinance, the buck stops here when it comes to site plan approval.
Okay.
If there's a variance, it'll go to the zoning Board of Appeals still, so that's the next step.
Okay.
But it will not go to the city council.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
No problem.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
Since I was involved in passing it along to the administration.
Yes.
That sounds like we're getting a significant amount of authority ceded to us from the city council. Is that correct?
Just for site plan approval. That was all the city council was willing to give you.
Well, we appreciate that, city council. Brian Hopkins?
I'm really excited to see a lot of the new development coming into Westland. There's some amazing designs. Everything looks so nice, and it's just so exciting to see the revitalization of the city. And very positive. I like everything that's going on. I think we're doing an excellent job. That's all I have. Congratulations, everybody. You're awesome.
Thank you very much. We are aware. Ruby Richards?
I would just like to say I'm glad that that item got taken off, because, like I said, I was invited there to see it, and really, by that being gone, you know, some of your serenity is gone, isn't it? You know, so, yeah. So hopefully the trees will grow back or whatever. But I enjoy working with you guys, so that's it for me.
I echo what the other parishioners have said about case, the third agenda item, being withdrawn today. It was nice to see residents come out to support each other once again, as we saw at the last meeting. And I am happy to work with people that are thoughtful and detail-oriented, because it's what we owe to our residents, so.
Thank you very much. David Swolkes. David Swolkes has nothing. I will take your time.
No way.
No. You can't have my time. I don't yield.
Deborah Fox.
Thank you.
You can claim my time.
It gives you, what, six minutes to talk? Anyway, I missed last month's meeting, and I'd just like to say that I miss you guys somehow, and I'm happy to be back today.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Anything from the administration?
I have to pee so bad.
You are excused, sir.
It's on record. It's on record.
That's all I have.
Nicole, do you have anything like thee to speak on?
I'm very proud of you all, and this group does above the average diligence, and I'm just proud of you all. You do a great job, especially our planning director as well.
So with apologies to the director, I do have a few comments that might take a few minutes, which, if you do need to, well, be excused, please be excused. So regarding item number three, case number 1933C, of course, I am gratified that the petitioner did opt to remove the item from the agenda, but I have a couple of lingering concerns, and if you could take some notes, some of them I would like the administration to look into. And I'm going to, most of them are concerns about the petitioner, but I'm going to speak with some concerns about the letters that we received from our citizenry. While they did raise some very valid points and things that we should consider, I found one of them to be wholly defamatory in the suggestion that approving the proposal would somehow open the door for human trafficking. That is insulting and beyond the pale. And had this actually gone forward and that petitioner, or, sorry, and that citizen appeared before me, I would have made my concerns very, very clear. I also did not appreciate that one of the letters made a not-so-veiled threat to this board. We are here to do a job. We do that job on behalf of the city at the request of petitioners. We are not responsible for what we do and do not give an ear to, and it is not negligent in any way, shape, or form for us to do our jobs. That having been said, I was very concerned, I also visited the site, and while I do recognize that the site is zoned industrial, this sort of a thing is one of the more difficult to handle in city zoning, because you do have a heavy use, which is an industrial, even an I-1 is still a heavy, considered a heavy use, and it abuts an R-1 district. This is difficult. Both are common uses in city zoning, and occasionally, they do end up next to each other, and it makes for a very difficult and obviously passionate consideration. And thankfully, we have a board that is both responsible and solemn when we approach these things. And I'm glad to know that not only were we all prepared, but we were all concerned about the integrity of our decision on this matter. That being said, when I did visit the site, I did notice a plume of dust coming off of the existing use, which made me concerned that the existing use from this petitioner is not in compliance with dust abatement. And I would ask the administration to look into that, please, because it was getting into my eyes, and I was not even on their site. There are children around there. That having been said, the, there's additional concerns that I would have had about the nature, I believe, and please correct me, administration, if I am wrong, that the use of a site, of a plot, under I-1 as a parking lot is a special land use?
Yes, I believe that's true.
And does that extend to the parking lot specifically for heavy machinery? And my concern is, is that the definition for light industrial, as I understand it, usually refers to vibrations, smells, and sounds being generally restricted to the site itself, and if they're not, that would be a higher industrial use. And my concern for this particular proposal was that although technically a parking lot, the vibration from heavy diesel engines might unduly affect the residents nearby and give rise to potential action for nuisance, which, of course, we would prefer to avoid. So, that having been said, and now you are aware of my concerns, and once again, I am very impressed and pleased with the board that I have. Thank you all very, very much. I also mirror all of the comments that I've heard. I think you are all awesome. Thank you very much. With that, a motion to adjourn is in order. All those in favor, please indicate so. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. We are adjourned. Thank you very much, administration.